Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started with our combined committee meeting tonight. And the first thing on the agenda is courtesy of the floor. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only, there'll be another one at the end of the meeting. Seeing none. We'll go right into our discussion items and the first one is the presentation of our audit report by Gorman and Associates. So come up, have a seat. And I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Aristocazian.
So we've had the great pleasure of being audited by Gorman Associates this year. I think Miller is here to give you some of the results and feedback.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Harry said, my name's Hank Miller. I'm a partner at Gorman Associates. And we oversaw your audit of the financial statements for the 2324 fiscal year. So you should have two items in front of you from us. The first is the stapled pages there. This is our management letter to you, the board. Basically, this is our correspondence to you explaining any findings, comments, suggestions found based on the work performed during the audit. Happy to report that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. There were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses found in our audit for the 2324 fiscal year. And in there, we also discuss any recommendations we would have. There was one thing that we discussed as far as accounts receivable. I won't get into the details. But that's all covered in our management letter. So again, if there were any issues, we would address that with you in this report. Then you have our bound report. This is the single audit report for the year ended June 30, 2024. Briefly, I just want to go over some financial highlights. So after the audit, you know, in these financial statements, you'll see that the district ended the year with a surplus of nearly four and a half million dollars. So you ended the year with a fund balance of seventy-two million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Also, I would just like to report that, you know, over the last few years, the Food Service Fund has been showing operating profits. So the last two years in particular, it, the Food Service Fund has reported around 1.8 million dollars in profits for the year. Now, back to the audit report. I'd like to start you on page three. We have our independent auditors' report. And in the very first section, this is where we give our opinion on the financial statements. This is the whole reason we do an audit, which is where we come in. We look at the underlying financial records and transactions and reports. And in reviewing that information, help the district prepare these financial statements. And then give our opinion that in our, you know, based on our audit procedures, we believe the financial statements are presented fairly to you, the board, and to the public and any readers of the financial statements. So again, here we're giving our opinion that these financial statements are presented fairly and accurately. The independent orders reports also gets into what our responsibilities are for the audit as well as management's responsibilities, you know, and some other information. After the independent auditors' report, there's a management discussion and analysis section. This is not audited by us. This is prepared by your management in their own words. We do review it to make sure that, you know, the numbers are in line with the financial statements themselves and that it makes sense. But again, it is not audited. And then after your M D N A, you have your basic financial statements. After the basic financial statements, we have notes to the financial statements. They, they basically provide additional information and can provide more clarity and detail about what the numbers actually mean and how they're derived. So instead of just having the numbers themselves. And we'll explain things like what kind of basis of accounting we're using, those types of things. I will jump to the end of the report. The last section in the report is a single audit section. A single audit is a compliance audit, which is required when a school expends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards. So in addition to auditing the financial statements, you are also required to have a federal grant audit, a compliance audit. So this year, we looked at the child nutrition cluster, which includes National School Lunch Program, your school breakfast program. And we look to make sure that we audited that those programs to make sure that the district is maintaining compliance and following the compliance requirements set out by the federal government. And the Office of Management and Budget, the O M B, as outlined in their uniform guidance. So in the single audit section, the, the first statement you'll see would be the C F A, which is your schedule, schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which basically details all of your federal programs. And then we have a couple auditors' reports after that. And then we have your schedule of findings and question costs. So if there were any findings during the federal compliance audit, they would be noted in this section. And again, happy to report that there were no federal compliance issues noted in your single audit this year. So that's basically all I have for you.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the board? Anything for the auditors while they're here?
Just a thank you to Mr. Aristocazian, Mr. Pern, the business office, everyone who contributed to the audit. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for joining us and giving us our concise cover letter and report. It was, wasn't all that long ago where this was a much longer item on the agenda than it was. And that's a real tribute to the, the board and to our business office of running a, a tight ship. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. No other questions. We'll move on to the second item and that is the facility item dealing with Fountain Hill Elementary School. Mr. Stein, you want to fill us in on this?
Thank you. Just a quick check in, just to report that we have received conditional land development approval for the Fountain Hill Elementary School construction project. There are fifty pages of conditions attached to this, you know, gone through planning and zoning and the borough engineer, the fire marshal, all the, the planning teams that started exactly almost one year ago. January of twenty-four, we began this process to get to this point today. So everyone is reviewed, engineering design team are on board and it's not an easy process, let me tell you, going through the, to get from where we started on January twenty-seventh of twenty-four to, you know, January thirteenth of twenty-five, but secured the approval with the conditions attached and we are out to bid and ready to make a new Fountain Hill happen.
Excellent. Questions on that? Bids are due when, Mr. Stein?
January twenty-eighth.
All right. So two weeks away.
February twenty-eighth.
All right. Two weeks, six weeks, either way. It's still, it's almost there. Big milestone.
Congratulations, Mark, and thank you. The success of a construction project is always at the formative steps, not necessarily when they're laying the bricks and putting everything in and we're on schedule ahead of time. So everything's on track.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Next up, two point oh three is a second reading of policy two oh one. This deals with admitting new students. Dr. Burris is coming up. You see the policy in front of you. We have some additions and deletions from last time.
On Mitchell Hendricks, supervisor of child accounting here this evening, in case you had any questions. Also, at the end of last year, Mitchell had put together a list to help consolidate and make the policy more friendly. He came up with one additional item that is on page two, it's highlighted in either orange or yellow. Because the greenish block did show up as a big contrast. So again, that would be for your consideration and I will let Mitchell explain to you why he has come with this additional item.
So as we're facing the obvious housing crisis that is prevalent across the Lehigh Valley, we found that we're having a lot of students who are coming to us from other districts partway through the year. As we all know, every district is entitled to set their own age requirement for kindergarten and for first graders. A lot of the other districts in our areas have cutoff dates that are actually later than ours. So we have students who are coming into kindergarten partway through the year in December, January, so on and so forth, who have never stepped foot, sorry, who have been in kindergarten up to this point and are now showing up in our classrooms and are significantly behind in their development from where our students are. We're also having the opposite challenge where districts who have a cutoff date earlier than ours are having students who move here have never stepped foot in a kindergarten classroom and are requesting to enroll. So this addendum to the policy is essentially proposing that after the first two weeks of the year, we will only admit students if they meet the age requirement and have already been enrolled into kindergarten program. In speaking with a lot of my colleagues at various districts across the Lehigh Valley, this is something that they are all enforcing, if not explicitly in their policy, something that they're all doing in practice. It's also something that many of our schools in Bethlehem are doing and this will help to get us all on the same page and have a consistent approach to how we handle these students when they come in and something back to which we can direct them.
Dr. White.
Just in terms of reasoning behind it besides an age cap, is there also an assessment of emotional readiness or mature, a maturity level of being able to sit in a classroom and, and deal with that new environment? Is that one of the reasons why we're doing this?
There is, yes. Some of, and again, it's hard to make a generalization, but some of these students are coming in and are emotionally, maturely behind where a lot of our students who have started the year with us are. And to provide the students the support that they deserve and that they need to be successful is simply not feasible for a lot of our classrooms at that point in the year.
And we're able to do this because kindergarten is not required? That's correct. Okay. Mr. Lozey.
I think I heard it when you were explaining before, but could you provide context as to what our policy or practice was and what that looked like based on your knowledge in the schools? So like, what do we have written down and what, what were people actually doing?
Sure. So as we have it written now, all it says is that a student must be five on or before October first. That's the only requirement that we have written into our policy for kindergarten. For first grade, we have written into our policy that the student must be six on or before October first. And we will only accept them during the first two weeks of the school year unless they're coming from another kindergarten, or sorry, another first grade program or have met that age requirement. So really what we're doing here is mirroring the kindergarten admission policy to match the first grade admission policy. Most schools across the district were generally staying with that theme of if you don't start the year in kindergarten, you can't jump in. And if your birthday is in the middle of December, when the rest of our kids' birthdays are prior to October, that creates a potential concern for the student's development. This just kind of puts it on paper so that we have something that we can point everybody back to and that's so, sorry. So that all of our district, all of our schools district wide, sorry, are following the same pattern.
Yep. Dr. White.
And I'm not as versed in Act forty-nine as I should be, and I'm sorry, I haven't memorized it all. But Dr. Silva, can you tell me if this does not compromise our adherence to the Commonwealth in ter, in terms of providing public school for the children who are available? That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Beckpulley?
Just as a resource for our schools, for those families who are seeking to enroll, say the student turned five in the middle of December. So it's not going to fit in one of our kindergarten classes per the policy. Will schools have like lists of places to set, you know, whether it's pre-K programs or other daycare programs? Just again, it's just as a sort of warm hand. Just again, it's just as a sort of warm handoff, it can't come into our building yet, but.
Sure, that's not something, as far as I'm aware, that we have kind of uniform across the district of here are all of those resources for kids who don't make our kindergarten requirements. But that's absolutely something that we could prepare and have available to the schools. So thank you for that.
Other questions? All right, any other highlights on the policy you want to point out? Or is that the only big change, everything else looks?
Everything else was the same.
Was there the last time?
I have not received any questions by any board members about what was presented in the end.
All right, perfect, thank you, Mr. Hendricks, thank you, Dr. Burris. Next up, 2.04. Yeah, Mr. Lozey?
I understand, but after this reading, when we come together at the formal full vote to.
That'll be final, yeah, I'm sorry, final approval will be in two weeks.
Thanks, I can remember.
That'll be the third reading. Yep. All right, and then the final item there, 2.04, deals with the Kellin Foundation and a proposal we're seeing from them. Dr. Burris?
Yes, the Kellin Foundation has been in the district three or four years. It's a program that's made up of 12 in-person sessions and it and this one is scheduled to start on February 4th and go until April the 29th. Prior to those 12 formal sessions, there will be two sessions to kind of kick off an introduction, as well as the second session will take all of the biometrics, which you'll see on page two of this brochure. And after the formal meetings, there are additional, what they call alumni meetings for the follow-up of a remainder of a year. And again, they will review the baseline, the questionnaires, and making sure people are on track and following the program. It's basically to increase personal health, feelings of well-being, and reduce individual stress levels in the hopes to have a positive impact on the benefits of the program of the district.
And this is for our staff, correct?
This is for our staff, yes, and it is open to all staff. Over the last three or four years, they started with some targeted groups and then it has been expanded to anyone in the district and/or their spouses can attend as well. The cost of the program is $30,000, which has been budgeted for. And we we have had great remarks made by the staff, and I would just like to read some parts of testimonials for you. There's nothing fat or diet about this program, it's simply loving people, helping you change your habits in small ways to meet your goals. I really enjoyed the journey, it is a life changer. The group support was great, it was comforting to know others are facing similar challenges. And the last one, the program was very beneficial, I learned lots of good eating habits and exercise habits. Chef Amanda guided us and taught us so many wonderful recipes. The support we received was very helpful, listening to our individual challenges and helping us keep going forward. So again, lots of positive feedback from those that have participated. We're fortunate to have the Kellin Foundation in our community, it's one of the leading organizations about lifestyle medicine, an idea that is very common all around the world, where people use as their first line of health, their their diet, their exercise, the lifestyle decisions they make, rather than pills, surgery, and all the rest. So the goal is ultimately a healthier workforce, a healthier, happier, more productive workforce. But as JT mentions, there are, there can be additional benefits of cost avoidances for those more expensive ways of maintaining health. I have personally attended the Kellin Foundation programs, I'm not a graduate, I did my best to get to as many as I can. But I can, I can tell you that they, some of the comments that Dr. Burris mentioned are are true, that they do a lot of good work there. And it's a benefit that we give our employees that I think is really forward leaning, modern, and effective.
Dr. White?
I didn't read anywhere in this two-page proposal if there's a limit on number of participants?
There is, I just don't know what that number is.
Okay. And and so like the the other program that is launching tomorrow, there's a deadline for registration?
Yes, but to my knowledge, they have never turned anybody away.
That's great. And then to Dr. Silva's point, I know that our teachers are very busy and dedicate a lot of their time to our students. If they miss a meeting, and I know that I've done a few diet programs and I'm never successful at them, I keep going. But anyway, is there a way that if they miss a meeting or a gathering, there's a way to catch up with some of the information?
They have a very robust website of materials, dashboards, ways to recollect information, hold their numbers, their test data. It's a pretty comprehensive support system.
That's great, I just want to make sure that, you know, part of healthy lifestyle is also reducing our stress. And if we're stressed out because we can't get to the anti-stress program, that kind of doesn't really help. So thank you, thank you for all the consideration.
I I know Eric is very helpful, very outgoing, so if anybody would ask him afterwards for some questions or to stay after, I doubt he would ever say no, just my interactions with him.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Have you noticed any impact on the benefits? Has there been any sort of cost?
We have not dug that deep into the information. They may have some statistical data based on, because they don't just do it here at Bethlehem, that they have that from other groups. But to my knowledge, they have not asked us for other information, nor would we actually be able to dig into that unless somebody would sign off that we could look at that.
Other questions? Seeing none, then we have a couple information items. Thank you, Dr. Burris.
Thank you.
First up is some modifications at the end of the school year at Fountain Hill, given the start of construction. Mr. Stein?
As Dr. Silva mentioned a few short moments ago, a lot of our success comes in the the front end of these projects. So in looking at our our schedule and some critical milestones and after completing our environmental survey of the property, we're looking at a little bit of a time pinch, and we're looking to free up some time in the schedule so we can hit our milestone to have the building knocked down before we can begin our heavy site work before the winter freeze sets in. It'll allow us to keep moving ahead with the project on the originally planned schedule. So the the plan right now would be to change the last day of instruction from at Fountain Hill from June 9th to a week earlier, June 2nd. So that would open up one additional week to get our asbestos folks in, to begin their mediation, which is a lot and is more than we initially planned. And that will help us ensure we hit that September 10th milestone to begin the site work before the the deep freezer winter sets in.
Similar to the HVA, HVAC projects in previous years, we are, we're fine with the number of instructional hours that Fountain Hill kids have, so we meet all the state requirements. Fountain Hill is is called Fountain Hill because the school's built it on a into a hill. And the site work, the movement of roads and everything is gonna is gonna be a pretty big challenge. So if we want to hit the most important milestones, we can still serve the students and the additional challenge of once January or June 9th rolls around, there's no one going back into that building forever. So it's not like Nitchman where, you know, you could, where you go back in and it's like, it's done. So that'll give us a little buffer time with our faculty as well, who are going to have to prepare for teaching in a new school for the next two years.
Ms. Patrick?
Are there going to be any accommodations for like childcare or any families that were currently using those services to help them out those weeks, or would they be possibly redirected to another school?
Right now, the Fountain Hill childcare is being served at Donegan to meet those needs. So we can continue to meet those needs at Donegan during that time.
Mr. Lozey, and then Dr. White?
Along those same lines, with our students that have learning differences and special needs that are at Fountain Hill, will us being no longer in a traditional classroom building setting, will that cause any issues for making sure that they're provided their proper, free, appropriate education, FAP?
For that last week, you mean, Mr. Lozey?
Yes, sir.
I don't think so, we'll we'll have that, make sure we'll make sure that those special education students, I A Ps are reviewed and we meet all the standards.
And Dr. White?
And then continuing the services for the families, once the building has has gone away, there's still going to be a need throughout the summer. And I do know, are there programs that exist in the summer? That's question one, and and where would they be if they exist? And then second question is, are there any programs or transitional awareness issues for the families as they get ready to go to the the other site?
On the first part is, usually our summer programming is hubbed anyway. So we would probably resist using the the new school or the the temporary school. So Fountain Hill students would be served by a hub.
Okay.
And the second part of it was.
Just transition programs or awareness to the families so that they know this is what it's going to mean to your schedule, this means what your life, your your school now is up on, you know, Chayner'sville Road.
We will have numerous meetings, numerous communications. We, as a matter of fact, met today as far as what it means, this transition means for each of our departments, each of the requirements inside the school, and we'll do our backwards map to make sure we meet all those needs.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just know, it's good, change is always fun. So it's it's just that awareness of timing and and, you know, now the child has to wake up that much earlier. It's it's just, you know, it's going to take a while for our families to be.
We're working in classic B A S D way, we're working through all the stakeholder groups, the board, the leaders, the teachers, the families, and then the kids, we have some some things to do with our kids at the end of Fountain Hill's usable life. So we'll we'll proceed through those in a very logical way.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Mr. Lozey? Yeah, Dr. Shively, go ahead.
No, this is, this is sort of a lighthearted question, but are we going to allow the children to have sort of a ceremonial goodbye to the building?
Kamala Hammer?
That's kind of, that's kind of meaningful.
We will have something, we'll have some nice, we'll have some nice.
Mr. Lozey?
Just a brief rebuttal, but Dr. Dr. Shively, I'm glad that you brought that up because although all of our neighborhood schools are are special, Fountain Hill for people, for generations of people means different things, that building does. So I'm glad that we do have that in the works. Dr. White, I did want to piggyback on what you said and just to provide, one of the things that Mrs. Stanba mentioned in several of our meetings for the Fountain Hill building process is how she has been asking her teachers and her faculty and staff all sorts of information so that they can start to provide that. So she has been working on that for well over a year. And I am just super like amazed at the foresight that she brings to the meetings and that she's put together and trying to develop all of the transitions and even meeting like certain families that this is going to be like a significant issue because, as we know, a lot of our schools are more than just educational facilities for some of our families, to making sure that there's support in place for them. So I did just want to throw on record Mrs. Stanba's commitment to that.
And to that end, I have dibs on the 1976 bicentennial plaque that's in that, because I was part of the student committee that made that happen.
Well, you know, for a donation to the foundation, we can make lots of things happen. Other questions, comments on Fountain Hill? If not, then we move on to our final item, thank you, Mr. Stein. Dealing with some or just outlining some current case law that exists surrounding undocumented students and treatment of undocumented students, given the current political climate and promises made from the incoming administration. So Dr. Silva?
Yeah, this is just the response, I believe we had a question or a request for information, so we put it down on paper. The content has been reviewed and approved by our council. I'm not going to read to you, but the the long and the short of it is, students, we're not allowed to ask students about their immigration status. We have a responsibility, both I would say moral and legal, to accept students who come to our door, who meet our requirements. We don't ask them their immigration status. And by law, when they come to our child accounting, the the evidence we ask for citizenship cannot require them to disclose of whether their their immigration status. So if someone calls and says, hey, I would like a list of all your documented undocumented students, there is no list because it's not, it's not allowable under the law for us to keep it. So I I think that's important to reiterate to folks. And that is established in all of those court cases that you see on page one. I've also included here practical implications for schools. If and when enforcement of an immigration issue would come to the door of a school, there are pretty high standards for that, a signed warrant by a judge is required, not just a police officer coming and asking questions. And there is actually a legal process by which how that's reported, in our case, to the superintendent, the L E A. And then I would check with our council to prove the authenticity and the merit of that document and then escort the person through whatever access they would have of student records. So the bar is extremely high and the protections are also high for students when dealing with the practical implications of of immigration status. We put a few do cans and cannots to help give guidance for our our principals. That will be, that would be a very stressful situation and just a handy chart for them, some key guidelines, and then some removing of an undocumented student, what it requires. So we want to make sure that we have that information available. I do not anticipate that that would be the case, that we're going to be hit with a dramatic increase in a number of immigration officers looking to get information or students from our schools. But I do know that it's on a lot of people's minds as we speak, and we want to make sure that we're we're moving from something on black and white that's based in the law.
Thank you, Dr. Silva.
You're welcome.
Questions on this? Any comments, Dr. Shively?
Has there been cases?
Not in my recent memory, I don't think so. And from my understanding, the focus of immigration enforcement is probably going to be more not towards students and families, but maybe someone who accused of a crime or something along those. But we should still know what we're, what our rights are.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, and that takes us to our list of agenda items for January 27th. First up is the Fountain Hill land development approval that we heard about from Mr. Stein, so you'll see that on the agenda on the 27th. 4.02 is a typical private transportation contract for the entire school year, you see the details there outlined below. 4.03 is the agreement with C H A, formerly Dewey Engineering, to design the fieldhouse at Freedom. Mr. Stein is getting up, I tried to keep him in his seat, but he came up anyway.
Quick one. Appreciate it, thank you. No, just to clarify, the the project that the board approved a while back, it's going to require more than just a typical summer project, let's go do it. We're essentially doing new construction out of the ground. So requires that we go through the land development process that we just took a year to get through at Fountain Hill. The same thing will have to, same hoops await us at Bethlehem Township. So requires some additional, you know, engineering services, civil engineering work to get us through that process. So that's why this is a little bit different than the typical, you know, seven and a half percent fee for Dewey to go knock out a bullet replacement somewhere.
For a little fieldhouse?
Not so little, but for a fieldhouse, yes.
Understood.
Everybody okay with that? Questions? All right, 4.04, custodial supplies for the year. You see the notick seed cost there, $100,000, standard business. 4.05 is an update to our intercom systems at both Calypso and Farmersville Elementary. Mr. Lozey?
That's a quick question on those. It's kind of like an obsolescence versus like actual life usage, whatever. But how long, maybe an amalgamation of both schools, how long have we had those systems? And what we're buying, how long are they expected to be used, barring any sorts of like, schools now plant this in your head and it's not a thing anymore type of thing?
The current systems we have, I think, are approaching their 25th birthdays. So they don't owe us anything at this point, and the new systems are a combination of the old school hardware and now software. So now it's a server-based system, so as software, hope can last, I wouldn't say indefinitely, can't say indefinitely, but we should get our 20 years out of that as well moving forward.
Mrs. Schenkel?
Speak to that from my previous professional experience, the TELUS interview, that they last like 25, 30 years, that they are very long. Lasting solid.
And better.
And better, I mean, the one at TJ has been there for, I don't know how long, got to be 30 years by now, right?
They're 25 years old, these two buildings, I didn't talk about the other buildings that they're still out there.
Yeah.
All right, everybody good on that? Next up is, thank you, Mr. Stein, 4.06 is the annual impact aid application, using data from this year for next year. 4.07, school safety and security assessments as recommended by PCCD. We see the low bidder there.
These are grant funds?
Grant fund. Grant funds used to pay for that, cover the cost. 4.08 is the approval. 4.08 is the approval of the audit we heard about at the start of the meeting. 4.09 are two tax exonerations purchased by the Bethlehem RDA, seeking exoneration effective this school year, so dating back to July 1, 2024. I guess, yeah, why are we backdating that? Because I know we've had other ones that have requested have been made and we never backdate them. Why does this one get to be backdated?
That's a great question. The reason we backdated is because the actual purchase date was in April. The school district calendar doesn't start until July 1. For county purposes, their calendar year starts in January. So April date is before our start date of July 1. That's why we're making the exception. If they would have purchased that on July 2nd, regardless of what the county would have done, we would not have backdated it. So our calendar for tax purposes starts on July 1.
No, I understand that. So this is just, I'm just wondering why we didn't see it in April?
Because the county backdates it to January. So it wouldn't have been on the county's list because it was bought in April. Their calendar starts in January. So it's a timing issue, which is why we're making the exception.
I don't like the exception. I mean, it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of money, but it, I don't like the exception.
We have done that in the past based on a timing issue. So anything that becomes tax exempt prior to July 1, we have honored that. In this case.
I feel like the onus should be on them to get it to us sooner than nine months later, but that's just me. We wouldn't do it for a homeowner. I don't think we should do it for government authority. That's just me. It can go on the agenda and people will vote how they vote. I'm just speaking my piece on that. I appreciate the explanation. Oh, yeah. Mrs. Schenkel, Mr. Shudy, or whoever?
What happens then if it's voted down?
They pay the bill. They have to. Yeah, I would have no problem moving forward, beginning this July 1 of 2025, but.
No, no, it wouldn't be exonerated because they're already tax exempt. So anything in 25 and forward would be tax exempt. This is simply a timing issue that they've asked us if we would consider rectifying because it was before our calendar start date but after the county start date. And typically, we follow the county's lead in terms of the exoneration. The county has revisited it and exonerated taxes. Again, it's a timing thing, so they've asked, we brought it forward. Ultimately, it's your decision on how we want to move forward.
I agree with Mr. Fessino. I kind of worry about the precedent we're setting with this a little bit. We just had one, a nonprofit, ask us similar, and we denied that one. So, and I understand Mr. Skazian saying, so if you do a tax assessment appeal in 2025, it doesn't take effect until 2026, just to, and it's the same thing here. They bought the property, they didn't get the exoneration or their non-exempt, or their exempt status, like rolled back to January 1st, but then it doesn't affect us until next year, really, our next tax.
I just feel like the onus is on the taxpayer in every other case. I don't, I mean, this is, if it was a month, I get it, if it's August or something like that, but it's January, and it's gonna be January 27th when we say yes or no on this. But that's just me. I have no problem putting it on the agenda, maybe some, we have further information or people can vote how they feel. Any else questions? Nope. 4.10 is the contract there with the city of Bethlehem and their going rate going forward. 4.11 are some donations that we're receiving. You see, and these are all, well, I shouldn't say all. These are some graduation scholarships and then some donations from Central Meridian Church and the schools they're allocated for. 4.12 is the purchase of additional Chromebooks. You know, we've been doing that for quite some time.
As planned.
As planned, yep. And you see the replacement cycles there, the grades, the students get them, and that has not changed. 4.13 is a renewal of the CMS system for Apple. Nothing changing there, Mrs. Bachmann. Routine business with that. 4.14 is Patan, a speech-language pathologist grant. Mr. Lozey?
Just a question about those students that would be cut, those graduate students, am I correct?
I'm sorry, which one are you on?
4.14.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Those, I'll say participants for lack of a better term, that would come in, do we have any pipeline as they come through that program to eventually join us? I don't, I mean, I'm sure there are more students in their our positions, but is there some sort of like, hey, if you do good at this, we might look out for you?
I think this is sort of the pipeline. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then it's on us to not let them get away.
Right.
When they graduate and they're ready to be full-time employees. Yeah. Great question, though. 4.15 is IU contract for service agreement. You can see the details of that. And not to exceed number increased slightly from the last time we have voted on this back in December. 4.16 is the admission of students. It'll be the third reading that we heard about from Dr. Burris earlier. And 4.17 is the Kellin Foundation proposal that Dr. Burris briefed us on earlier as well. Any other questions? Anything we missed? Everybody good? That wasn't bad for combined committee. We do have, it takes us courtesy of the floor, anybody wishing to speak on any business now, not just agenda items? Now would be the time. Mr. Antolics, you gotta go.
Hey!
Yes, you can.
Okay, very good. There's three items I want to discuss, and one that's very interesting, which is historical, is based upon the status of the students in terms of their citizenship. This was a major problem in 1917, when the United States got into World War I. And majority of the South Side people were all immigrants. And they were herded, not, the interesting thing was they sing a lot the Austrian Hungarian, but not the German. Both were enemies of the United States. But the Austrian Hungarians were herded into the marketplace and said, you are now potential enemies of the United States and are up, could be up for deportation. And it scared the hell out of everybody because they had no recourse. But the reason was, it came out later, it was a ploy for two reasons, to get the immigrants who didn't trust the banks, to get the monies out of their mattresses and put them into the banks. And secondly, they get the men of age to join the army. So that was the reason for the big, big deal. But it's similar in some respects. I thought you might enjoy that. Number two. B A S D is part of the best and worst in terms of the school scores. And starting with the best, the Lehigh Valley Arts School is the best, but unfortunately, they're not in the district, but they're in Bethlehem. And the worst in reading was Fountain Hill Elementary. So Bethlehem has a record of being the best and worst in that area. And the third item I want to bring up, which concerns me is, really concerned me is, is grade inflation a policy in the Bethlehem School District? And if so, why?
Prevention of grade inflation? I suspect you're.
Well, I don't understand that well, but what I understand about it is, I'm a bit concerned because it implies that some of the students who go into college are having problems because the college expects them to be at the level where the grades say, but the grades, they're not at that level, and they're blaming it on grade inflation.
That was one of the major reasons that the Assessment and Grading Committee got together a few years ago and went with the recommendations to have assessment for learning, not just assessment of learning. So we, a lot of the work that Dr. Lisa and her talented committee have been doing over the last few years hasn't been dedicated specifically to preventing grade inflation, but it's been to.
To do what?
Hasn't been specifically dedicated to reducing grade inflation. It's been dedicated to having greater grade definition and reliability. So I'm comfortable that the Bethlehem area school district and its assessment and grading practices has its eye on authentic student achievement and meaningful grades than any other school district around. But we always want to make sure that what our students know and are able to do is peg that grade level and graded and reported accurately. So that's something we have always been working on.
Are gifted students suffering from this grade inflation program?
Any different than nationally or whatever the issue is related to?
In other words, has the grade inflation been a positive or negative effect upon this district?
I would say not any special way beyond what is just a general operation and practice in public education. The difference is, we've taken steps to improve it.
I'm having problems with your answer, but I'm not that well-versed in grade inflation to respond, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Antolics. Anybody else speaking courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, that'll take us to open forum. We have executive session following this meeting. We have personnel and contract negotiation. Just a reminder, our January 27th board meeting will be here, not at East Hills, but it'll be here at the Ed Center due to the play at East Hills. So we will see people here on January 27th if they so choose. Anything else from anyone on the board before we break? All right. Motion to adjourn. This is Patrick. Second, Dr. White.
Mr. President?
We are adjourned.